Good evening, we'll follow meeting in order again, so I should come by. I'd like to be to speak by the United States of America, and please the Republic for which stands one nation, our God, indivisible, the Lord of all. Thank you, we appreciate your coming out tonight, a very cold night, but it's warm in here, so welcome. A few announcements to go over before we get started. Agendas are available in the back of the room as you come in the door if you did not get one. Township video records all board supervisors meeting, they will be posted on the website. Written minutes will also be available on our website after approval by the board. Any individual here has the right to record these proceedings, but if you intend to do so, you must announce that at this time. With that, there will be two opportunities for public comment. We ask that if you would like to be addressed the board, that after being recognized by the chair, you would step up to the microphone in front of us, state your name and address, and then in your comments. With that, we'll do self introductions of the board, Dan Brad, Art Rutledge, Paul Solomon, Jeff Reynolds. And to my left is Todd Ziegler, our township manager, Tim Buck, our solicitor, and Wendy Brown, our recording secretary. Also, I want to announce that the board just came out of an executive session held immediately prior to this meeting, and it was discussed with legal counsel, status of an employee who is continually out of workman's comp disability. With that, we will go to our agenda. The first item is approval of the minutes of our February 16th meeting. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
On second.
Any questions or comments?
I'll make a comment. We get the minutes about a week prior to this meeting, not quite a week, and we review them very carefully each member of this board, and any mistakes or changes that are necessary, we'll make the changes to our managers, so you aren't just blindly approving these minutes.
Right, we all have the opportunity to individually ask questions about them, that's correct.
We already stood up to them, pack it, Paul.
Yeah.
Well, you already have.
Any other comments? And we'll vote, Dave.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Five votes to the affirmative, the minutes are approved. We'll turn to the treasures report for the month of February, questions or comments from the board.
If there are none, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second, and I would comment after that that it's nice to see that changing over some of our accounts is still paying off pretty well with interest, it was about $9,000 last month. And of course, one of our big expenses was salt, so I hope you're enjoying some clear roads because it was $28,000 last month. It's going to be budgeted about $70,000 for salt.
We're about 83 miles of township road, can you sum?
Close state. 79, a long mile.
State roads were a little messy in my travels, but the townships were pretty good this last time.
They are again, they're blowing, they're back, they're blowing, there's some pieces of sand, so be careful everyone with your league.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We shall vote, Dave.
Aye.
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 Aye. Five votes to the affirmative, the treasures report is approved. I think just informational, you have a copy of the 2018 audit report. There were no findings, which is good, it was a good clean report.
Yeah, this is good.
Any questions or comments from the board? Doesn't need any approval, it's just informational. We've arrived at our first opportunity for public comment, so is there anyone who wishes to address the board at this time? Joe, you're ahead, so we'll let you step up first. Okay, all right, go ahead.
Okay, I have nothing but time. Good evening, my name is Kathy Power, I live Pleasant Valley Grove, 12547. To the exact rate that junction from Susquehanna coming down, right out there on the bump, where there's accident after accident after accident, it seems like consecutive Fridays. That's not why, that's not what's right.
You haven't got that nice little home right across from the intersection, sometimes that area?
The stone down on the hill, green up top, right. The reason, there's a couple of things, I'm going to try and bring them all together. There's a creek on our property, as I'm sure you well know, and we've been in touch with the York County Conservation District, Gary Peacock, and he's helping us, the banks river, and we don't want to have creek side property. So, it's going to be a long way down the road, I mean, we have to come through here to get permits and stuff like that, but it's all, just wanted to, you know, give you heads up.
Excuse me, is that the South Brakes where you?
Yes. And the reason that I'm commenting is, our culvert is crushed. There's another one, I guess they call it the flood plain, comes across 616. On the one side, there's a couple houses coming downhill, they don't think anything of this creek, it's just a little creek. And stuff falls in it, the one, like in August, it poured, and I totally get the rain. I understand it's unprecedented amount of rain. But when it flooded over the road, I mean, logs, rocks, whatnot were coming over the road, and came on our side, and it crushed the culvert, it crushed the, whatever, I think that's what it's called. And I'm just curious as to who is responsible for repairing that, is that us? Do I need to put a work order in? How does that?
It damaged the culvert under 616. The small stream that comes out from the school area.
Right.
And it goes under 616.
Correct.
It probably got culvert, or was another culvert?
It's that one, that's the one.
That would be Penn Dock, that's a state highway.
Okay, so 616 is a state road, Thistles Church is a state road. Well, how come I see township trucks out there pot filling potholes?
You don't see them filling potholes in 616 or Thistles Church Road. You would see them plowing Thistles Church Road, we have a contract with the state.
Well, right across the street from us is that trailer park, and they're forever building a little dam keeping their stuff in.
It's not township, is it?
Yes, it is, it's yellow truck.
We have red and white.
Okay, well then.
Yellow is yellow.
Okay. So, I need to contact Penn Dock.
Thanks for coming in. Yeah, I don't have their number, if you call into the township office, we can give you the York number.
I can probably find, thanks.
Yeah, if you see, our trucks have a white, I mean, a red shield on, is it gray or? It's either a white pickup truck or all the dump trucks are red, so that would help you.
You know, one of our problems is, when it rains, a lot of property owners just want to run off, accelerate off their property as quickly as they can, they don't try to infiltrate it or manage it. So, it adds up when we have a heavy storm. We're all forced here, we're versing no runoff, it all infiltrated in the ground. That's just an aside.
It's not said, we do plow some state roads, we even plow roads for some other municipalities because it kind of fits.
Well, except on a fat, I mean, they're.
But we also get paid for doing that.
Yeah, I mean, they're buying.
Were there others who wanted to speak, if Phil were willing to wait? Go ahead, the gentleman back up here.
Good evening, I'm Mike Summers, I'm from Six and Curly Drive New Freedom. I'm here to represent the trees for the Trail Committee, the not-for-profit that's putting the, restoring the trees along the Sussman Trail, which you all have been very generous in supporting. So, I'll give you just a quick update on that, we did one of three plantings so far, we put in 61 trees, including a couple out here on your property. We had 125 people support that as far as volunteers. We have our next planting coming up, March 31st, and we have 72 additional trees going in. And then we'll have a last planting in the fall, which we hope to get the rest of the 200 trees that are being in. That's not really why I'm here though, but it's related certainly. We are going to have two signs on either end of the trail, the Sussman Trail, that will sit there and add verbiage as far as the historical nature of the trail and the trees. Why I am here is that there's two parks along trail, and one is under your jurisdiction, that we would very much like to put in a, hang these two.
Here's your turn to the Haintown Park?
Yes, yes. But these would be two foot by three foot or four foot interpretive signs, which, oh, one half would be about the historical aspects as far as how the trees became there 100 years ago, and then the second half would be about what the restoration is 100 years later that we're doing now. And then we would hope to have a little thing you could take your cell phone and go up against, and it would have a voice that would sit there and give you some of the history. So, we thought we were near on the agendas, if they're talk a little more about it, except this public comment, I'm happy to answer your question, but our hope would be to locate one of the signs in the Haintown Park.
So, what's the size of these other signs?
I think they can be anywhere from two to four feet to two by three feet, depending on, you know, how large you want.
Do you have any particular location in the Haintown Park, where you want to go?
We would certainly look to York Gardens, you know, my thing would be, it'd be nice if it was closer towards the trees, that would be someplace where there's traffic as far as public.
But you're talking one of these, is that?
Yes, yes, those are just some examples, it would be one board, you know, across that size, and those are just some examples.
Size, size needs maintenance, whose responsibility would it be to maintain these signs?
Well, our goal would be that it would be a sign that is somewhat permanent nature, these are part of ones that are done all over for parks and things like that. My guess is potentially shelf life of 20 plus years, and at that point, either somebody will sit there and say, you know, gosh, it's getting old, do we want to redo it? Or by all means, stay it down, but it's meant to, certainly, if you went back 50 years ago, people knew exactly where the trees came from and why they were there. If you asked somebody two years ago, very few people would have any knowledge as far as why there's all these sycamore trees. And of course, I think all of you know it's a memorial to the World War I veterans, that's now we can rededicate to all veterans.
Are you planning on landscaping around with shrubs or?
That wasn't our intent, but you know, whatever you all want, it's fine.
I think it would enhance the sign, give it some, if you could put some, I don't know, fill out the grounds, maybe like two tall trees, like, provide on the ends. I think it'd be a good idea, I don't know, do you have to keep it a board, or would you want the township to help, or what?
Our intent as far as the signs was, we were going to take work through the donations we received. Certainly, however you all want landscape that's had at it, if you want us to make that part, then we could certainly look to do that. What we want to do is the signs take a bit of time to design, and it takes a bit of time to produce, and so, if you sat there and said, we're not really interested, that's great, and we can sit there and cross it off, we have stuff to do, if you sit there and say, yep, this is something that we think would be enhanced, what's been done, then by all means, we'd be very happy to try to work out what we're looking for.
Well, it looks like they're attractive, and certainly they are interpretive, and I think you're right, majority of people today would not know the history for why those trees were there, or why these are being planted, I think that's correct. Questions from the board?
As I said before, I didn't know, I'm sorry, I think that the trail is our, is Shrewsbury Township's main street. I think these sycamores help enhance our township, plus they have the historical value. So, we're all, I think we're inclined to help whatever we can within reason.
Off the board, where are you looking to have the board's made in or installed?
So, we're going to do a dedication, we're basically Veterans Day of the end of this year. So, we will have our third planting by then, and hopefully have the vast majority of the 200 trees that we hope to restore in. It would be nice probably when we do that to have the signs in place. So, we probably prefer to do this year and kind of wrap this little nonprofit up.
Put it all on before the end of the year, I like it. Is there a way you can get us a little bit more, the worm search for escaping, but specific signage? I mean, I understand these are examples, but what it's going to say, what it's going to look like, and give us a couple of different options? Or just the one that you would like to, society has deemed the one that they want to put there? And I think we can take the more formal action on it at that point, once we're able to see what it is and what we're dealing with.
Well, just two quick things, so, in order to make this sign, again, we have no ability to design it, and so, go to this company to design with our input obviously, but the sign, we're going to hopefully have, we're having a meeting exactly now, and Jacoba's also, for their part. So, the two signs, assuming that both boards are in favor, would have to be exactly the same. So, that would be the only thing, it's, you know, it's going to basically be the verbiage as far as how did we get there, it would probably be a nice big beautiful sycamore, you know, a little straight along it, and that's going to have, you know, the history as far as, you know, how it now has been restored. Very happy to get that, but we wouldn't want to go through the cost of expense.
Of the designs.
Yeah, sit there and say, yeah, well, when we see we may or may not.
Do you have any preference as to which one of the ones you have here on this paper, you would select?
They're just samples.
No, they're just samples.
I think what we could do tonight is, could we just express our approval against the board's wish for a sign? And then we might ask to just.
See if we can approve.
Yeah, we'll keep you down. What you need is to know we're writing a little sort of sign when we're not in that area.
And work with them to determine the exact location.
Right, we, if you would work with us.
Yeah, absolutely, we want it to be a bit different.
Mutually, this would work out, I mean, I think that makes sense.
Also, I think there's five of these sources within the township to pay for landscaping around it, a trend to highlight it.
Yeah, I don't know if you want to do that because you want to redesign.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I wouldn't, I mean, these look like they're going to be a nice looking sign. I'd be inclined to say just let it go like it is, but we can brush that when we come.
I've already got this through.
That's just you.
We're going to have two, I'll provide it, narrow plants at either end framing it, then low ground.
But then they are covered.
Very possible. If I don't have to verify status.
It depends where you, where the site's located.
Do some landscaping that could tie into it.
I can tell you, there's one of these located in Freedom, have an Eagle Scout project that's along the creek at Freedom's Commons. It's absolutely beautiful, and it describes the plants that are there, so they can be very, very nice, so that's my exposure to it other than at parks, you see them obviously.
I would make a motion that we would approve the location of such a sign in Haintown Park. Location on that subject to be mutually agreed upon, and a final look at the sign.
And can it be up to the two by four, which is what information we said?
Yeah, around that size.
And any last thing would be at the township's discretion.
Oh dear.
All right, we have a motion and a second, further comments? That's it.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you and congratulations for the job you're doing.
Yes, thank you.
Coming together nicely, and we appreciate, as any veteran here, and I'm not, but those who are, we certainly appreciate what you're doing for them too.
Thank you, it's been an unbelievably rewarding project, as I said, we had the first planning, we were hoping to have 30, 40, 50 people, and 125 shows. So, it's really become a community project, which is rewarding all the time.
You're all going to get some.
Let us know when you're all done that, we might go and find another one for you.
It's getting up, we're looking, okay. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you for coming in. All right, Phil, I guess you're up. I don't know that we said the cost for playoffs.
You know, that's true. Phil Robinson, Amanda Lane, I just wanted to comment, it seemed like repeatedly, this study that was done back in 2000, addressing cost of services continues to come up. I reviewed that study in depth, and I just wanted to do a quick run-through of what I see there. I asked Todd to lose some stuff. Now, if you can bring that up. You know, the comment that comes up over and over again is the, I have. Change prepared. In other words, this year 2000, for every dollar of revenue generated by residential property in Shrewsbury Township, a dollar twenty-three was spent providing those services. This study was done by a non-profit organization, this was the only time they ever did a study like this. You want to go to the next one?
Do you have the study done?
Yes.
Could you go forward and tell me, gentlemen, please? Thank you.
It was, you just scroll.
Did you want, wherever you're highlighting?
Yeah, right there, that's who actually did it, South Central Assembly for Effective Governance. They're basically inactive now, again, they were self, I mean, a non-profit, so we can go to the next one. And when they did the study, because it had never been done before, and they didn't have any real science, they developed their own methodology to do the study. And it isn't a breakdown of residentially zoned area or agriculturally zoned area, it's actually residential use or agricultural. And what they did for the residential is they took every farmhouse on one acre and included it in a residential. So, it's not like you're segregating the residentially developed area, you're putting every single house in residential category, and the only that's in farm is open land, it doesn't have anything to do with anybody living there, it's just the open land. So, that's kind of a crazy way to do this thing, and when they did that, I think you can go to the next one. What happens is, they took, what they did then is they took all the expenses, and they met with the roadmaster, and they met with Mike Lee, and they met with different people, and assigned values or what the expenditures were to categories. Well, you can see in residential, got everything, in farm, got zero. Well, you know, highway maintenance wasn't zero for the farm area, the agricultural area, but because of the way they did this, they said that the only reason there was a reason for a road there was because someone lived there, so it was categorized as residential. And it's the same with trash collection, which in those days, township did pay for trash collection, they don't do it today, but they showed that was 100% for residential, and it was zero there in recreation and everything like that. And reality is that, you know, the road system stretches, like, was noted earlier, like 80 miles. It's just not in a residential zone, so you can't say that 100% of maintenance and 100% of everything goes to residential, because that confuses things, and I mentioned that it's a residential use and not agricultural. I think you can go to the next one. And I'm not sure if I'm clear, I understood this because I read it and really went through the whole study, and I'm not a professor that can really put all this information out, but it's kind of simple. If they categorized every house as residential, no matter where it was in the township, and then assigned all those costs to residential, it makes it look like residential development is the big cost, where in fact, most of your revenue, this is your, the, your budget for this year, and it shows you that most of your revenue comes from earned income tax. Earned income taxes, people living in houses and paying something from their income tax. The actual real estate tax for the whole township was only $42,000. It's that earned income where people are living in houses are generating the value, so, again, they didn't use that kind of statistic when they were putting the cost and expenditures in place. You know, you've got, like, in Art's neighborhood, probably 80 houses or 90 houses there, there's only a mile or so of road that gets plowed. All those people pay their earned income tax, and it's not stretched out over the 80 miles of the township, it's right there in that condensed area.
It's actually private, so.
Private, yeah, it's right, you don't even get anything. And that's the other thing about that whole cost of service is, the township doesn't do trash collection, the township doesn't have fire protection really, the township doesn't have police protection, you know, there really aren't that many costs. And when you go into these neighborhoods, there's a lot of money being generated from strawberry fields and from presidential heights in those areas. They're condensed where they need to be condensed, and it's not sprawled all over, and it was unfair to associate all that cost to the residential zone when it was really serving the whole township. I think you can go to the next one. And I'm not sure if I'm being clear, but I hope I am. Keep going. I did, and again, I don't want to see any foreign land or agricultural land rezoned. I totally believe development should happen in a residential zone, and you should put density in a residential zone, and you should leave a farm alone. But if you look at the fact of, this is the US Census for Shrewsbury Township, and there's 3,463 people in the workforce that are over the age of 16. You can scroll up a little bit more there. Yeah, so we see more of the page.
You went down this way.
Yeah, I saw it down, and if you look at where people are working.
It's slowly down.
I'm sorry. Income, only 12 people supposedly have reported that their income is from agricultural. Again, I'm not trying to tear up agriculture saying, we need it, and it's great, and it should stay exactly the way it is, but that's not where the earned income's coming from, the earned income's coming from other things other than the agricultural. And, you know, there's a lot of discussions about density and taxes. The whole, the whole country's changing, if you've got your copy of Township News, and I read the article on it, and it's things that I've been studying for years, and you need to put the density where it makes sense, you need to develop where it makes sense, you need to leave that ground alone, families are smaller, they're going to keep on being smaller, they're not going to get bigger. So, you don't have the school taxes that you used to have, and the same kind of pressure you used to have from that. And you do need to have people in the town generating income, paying earned income, and paying costs so that bridges that wash out on the far side of the township can be fixed, and all the work that needs to be done on those 80 miles of road can be done. And if you've got that density where you've got good earned income, it's covering those costs, that's it, thank you.
Phil, a couple of questions. The school taxes are included in this cost for residential units?
You're right.
And that that is overwhelming cost.
You're right.
To all of us. And in addition, may recall that when this study came to our attention, well, asking, it was paid for by the township in part. I checked with York County Planning, and they did research, and similar studies elsewhere in Pennsylvania and elsewhere, I got from New York State, and they're all very similar, that the average residential home in taxes, including school taxes, does not pay for all those services. Now, if you have $500 on a home, it certainly does, but the average home does not. And the commercial and industrial are paying a large part of our taxes, as does agricultural land. And they don't require, you're in the services, they pay a lot more in taxes than they require in services.
I think you used the key word there, agricultural land. Agricultural land is where this is based on, and agricultural land practically pays no tax. It's, the residents were also, those residents in the agricultural zone. And things have changed in the school, there hasn't been an increase in enrollment in schools in this municipality in well over 10 years, a guarantee of hasn't. The average home today, there isn't four kids or five kids, it's more like one point something per family, and even lower. And they're starting those families a lot later in time, so you don't see, they haven't had to build a new school, they haven't had to do a lot of upgrades in those schools, but what's happened is, you've got more tax base that's covering the cost of that existing school, that's for real. And I understand what you're saying, Paul, but it's deceiving to think that it's residential use. If we didn't have anybody living here, there wouldn't be any need. And when it always comes out that, you know, it's that residential use, you're right, it's that same residential use, it's on the farmland, it's the same residential use that's scattered on the whole township. So, it's always deceiving to think it's the density in the residential zones causing that cost problem, when in fact, that's the least expensive area, is where you have that density. You're gaining positive there as opposed to something that's scattered out, you know, where you gotta plow up two or three miles of road to get to one house.
I'm glad you're a favor, I'm glad you're a favor for preserving farm management.
100%.
We know we have a growth bottom line outside of which is permanent. We know we have a growth boundary line outside of which is permanently non-developable, although there's something allowed on agricultural land. So, and within that growth boundary, we have areas zoned for residential use, and we support that. No one's going to change that to anything else but what it is now. So I think we have a lot more maybe in common here than what...
I agree, we have a lot more in common. My only point is that if you have an area that's allowed for development, you should develop it to its fullest potential, and that that be where the density is, where that's where the income is, and you do protect that outlined farm ground. And I don't want to get into a real long debate about it here tonight, I just wanted to make a comment and deal with it.
And I, I think if I could just comment, first of all, this question has pretty much been back and forth a number of times between you and Paul. I don't think there's a board position or a board issue, or that even other board members have weighed in very frequently. I think this is like anything else, depending on how you select the numbers and how you put them together, you could probably make a case for each side of it.
I agree.
And it depends on where you're talking about, if you're looking at, I'll say where I am, that the cost of township actually is zero except for school taxes. Others are private, so the township never enters. The same with other developments, small ones and others that may be planned. So for those, there are no costs. You know, the school costs, the school, the costs keep going up, and we could sit here forever arguing about whether that's going or not, but, uh, I think you're right. You know, we appreciate what you showed, Mr. Ryan.
And I think it'd be good if you guys take a chance to look at that, so you, you know, fully understand what that's all about, that 2000. One other real quick comment is the, you know, the agricultural zone and development in the agricultural zone, in my opinion, is right next to impossible today. Between nitrate and stormwater and everything else, I wouldn't go out and try to do a development, even a single lot in an ag zone, and I think that's good. I don't think that's what we should do anymore. We will hunt them, we'll just the way it is. And, and I think that's not going to do anything but get more difficult because of DEP regulations. That's where that's going to come from.
Eighty percent of our township is zoned agriculture, and we want to keep it that way.
I agree.
And, uh, and, uh, as far as quality of life, all those other good things, it all adds into that, so we're on the same page for the rest.
We are, I think we are. Thanks.
Thank you, Phil. Anybody else who wishes to address the board at this time? Come on up.
Liv. Fire chief, she's very important. Uh, March second was our appreciation banquet. We had some plaques to get out. Didn't have anyone from the township there that evening, so this time I'm going to present the township from the fire company, Plaque Radiant and Shrewsbury Volts Fire Company, which thanks Shrewsbury Township for outstanding support for our station and members presented March second, uh, 2019. We felt that appreciation is, plaques are kind of a piece of wood, but we do appreciate everything the township does for us, and, uh, we just want to make sure that we understand that we do appreciate it.
And we appreciate this, I'm a max.
Appreciate it, I'm a max. Hello.
No trees would kill me.
It's plastic.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
It is metal wood.
And one tree as well.
It's going to recycle the wood.
Anybody else who wishes to address the township supervisors at this time? We will move on. We have some ordinance and, uh, ordinances and resolutions. Uh, the first one is, um, one that I kind of slipped up on. It allowed us to vote on an ordinance without having a motion or a second, which Wendy picked up during the minutes. So we need to correct, uh, correct my error there. So this is the ordinance that authorized execution of the Armstrong Cable Franchise Agreement, which we did unanimously approve, but without a motion. So I'll start by making a motion and we approve that agreement.
I'll second your motion.
Thank you. Can we have a second? Comments or anything? We can vote.
Aye.
You have to go ahead and...
Aye.
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 Okay, are we good this time? We're good.
All right.
We make mistakes too.
Thank you for picking. It was just a task, you see what I'm actually picking up your line. And you pay. Uh, no, thank you. The next one, Todd, maybe you'll say a few words about is resolution number 2019-06.
Yeah, the, uh, York County puts together and manages the Hazard Mitigation Plan for the county. Each municipality can do their own individual hazard mitigation plan if they so choose, or we can fall under the county's plan, and we've always fallen under the county's plan. This is simply an update, uh, as of, uh, they completed it in 2018. I believe it was early February when York County, um, Board of Commissioners approved it, so now it's going around all municipalities, I want to participate in it. I did not print a copy of it, because I believe Stan, it's two hundred and some odd pages, so if anyone...
And we would have lost some trees.
Yes. Um, if anyone wants it, I can burn on the CD for you or something.
It's online.
Okay. So this resolution is just that we accept the revised plan, and then we'll kind of participate under that plan as well.
Standing to incur with our, doing that as part of having our own plan?
If you don't do it, I have to run the litigation.
How many pages would yours be?
Twenty-six, not two-hundred, seventy-six.
I'll make a motion that we would adopt the York County Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Okay.
Motion and second questions. Same as sigh relief from Stan. Who would it be?
Uh, aye.
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 Aye. I vote to the affirmative, that's so adopted. Uh, next is resolution number 2019-07. Todd, I'll turn that to you, there's, it's an amended amendments to our 2019 fee schedule.
Typically, as you know, we do the fee schedule in January of each year. Well, in a couple of years, we'll have some amendments throughout here, so that's what this is on page one. Uh, just to clear up some language there, where it talks about zoning permits, it talks about accessory sheds under one hundred square feet, and then under that same sub-paragraph, it talks about all structures in all zones less than, um, should be a hundred square feet, but it's actually eighty. So it's just clearing up some redundancy and correcting that eighty to a hundred square feet. Then on page, huh, page five, again, just clearing up some language regarding fees for litigation for county commission solicitor. On page six, uh, we have a permit fee, we have in the fee schedule says twenty square feet, but it's actually, if you read the ordinance, it's a twenty foot diameter, and not necessarily square feet.
Nice touch.
And then the last thing is regarding stormwater management plans. When they're submitted to the township, they go to Jeff Schu for review, so of course, that's a fee that we're paying. So we charge three hundred and fifty dollars. The initial plan is three hundred and twenty, and then there's thirty dollars for recording the operation and maintenance agreement. We didn't have a fee for any resubmittals. And I think it's important that we do that, because not everyone, but every once in a while, we'll get an engineer that unfortunately will do the bare minimum, and wait to get that checklist and say, oh, I need to add that. So if there's a little incentive, that there's going to be a fee for additional review, and it's an additional cost to the township, so...
This fee is not based on square footage.
Yeah.
So it could be a small part, it could be a big part.
Yeah, because typically these are for, you know, a single-family home or garage or something. If it's a large, like a subdivision, that falls under the subdivision where we have to reimburse those. Um, and then middle department inspection agency updated their fee schedule, which is typically attachment. We're pretty much locked in that, that's not negotiable. Um, now, there's a couple of areas where they increase their fees significantly, particularly with solar panels. The inspection fees in the past have been, you know, two hundred, two fifty, and they've increased them to six hundred. Uh, so Art and I were talking earlier, I'm actually going to reach out, hope to have some information for you next month. Um, I'm going to talk to Commonwealth Inspection Agency. Keith Huddings, our zoning officer, you know, he covers quite a few municipalities, and he works with them closely, and he thinks they're a good inspection company firm as well, so.
Why so expensive?
Why six hundred dollars? They, they base it on the, I believe it's the kilowatts or something of the, and I, I don't know that about it. To know that it requires more inspection for a higher wattage system, I don't know.
So we're going to see for the, everything that's done, what another company that...
Right, so...
They keep thinking maybe less at all.
So what would happen is, we approve this tonight, and say in a month or two, we go with another inspection agency, and they're along with AGIA. We would come back with another revise, since the resolution doesn't require any advertising or anything to a point B.
We can immediately terminate.
Correct, because we don't have any... It's not for a year, so, you know.
We want to encourage solar panels, not discourage it.
Right.
Well, I think it would be good just to see somebody else's fees overall anyway. Any questions? More questions to Todd? No questions? Motion to approve? All second? Any further questions before we vote? We look, Dave.
Aye.
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 I vote to the affirmative, that resolution is approved.
It makes sense to know that most of these are not increased at all, so it's mostly clarification action.
Correct.
And increases.
Yeah, we're not trying to...
We have...
Mentioned down to be more than, but it's just a couple of costs.
We have nothing on the subdivision land development, so we'll go to reports. Manager's report is up first, is there anything you'd like to kind of clean from this one to the board?
Nothing really on my written report. I did give you a copy of an email from Patrick Behr, he was with the Rotary Club, looking for a representative for the township. If they was interested, let me know. They meet at seven o'clock on a Friday morning, at, I believe, New Freedom Restaurant. And the only other thing I just wanted to mention for those that aren't aware, Kinsley Construction is the contractor for the exit four interchange. I did receive, yeah, an email that on or about March eighteenth, they're going to start construction. Uh, the preliminary stages will include the installation of, uh, erosion and sediment controls, drainage improvements on all four ramps, uh, the main line work on, uh, eighty-three to prepare for the traffic switches, and they're going to demolish the old case and keg structure. I think you got a copy of that, Todd. Yeah. I'm doing this for safety of the public. And, uh, they're going to begin working on the northwest quadrant, which is where the case and keg is located, because they're going to be installing a new culvert under eighty-three and relocating that, uh, Deer Creek, uh, under eighty-three. Then by the middle of May, they anticipate the new traffic pattern on eighty-three, and they're going to push all the traffic to the center lanes, so that they can start working on the outer edges of the bridge, because it's actually going to be built and designed so that they could actually one day have three lanes in both directions. So, yeah, so...
Aren't they also putting in a storm, uh...
Culvert underneath?
Well, because of Shrewsbury Borough's water protection and what have you, aren't they putting, Tony, I can't remember what it's called...
Retention?
Thank you, it's one more retention thing to protect against an accident or something or spill. That way it doesn't get into...
Yeah, I've worked with the borough, I don't know those details. I got it all panned, but...
I think that's supposed to be in the case and keg area as well.
Yeah, the other thing just to note is, it says, um, all enclosure, uh, is to occur between nine PM and five AM, and it says all other times, we'll see lanes of eighty-three and eight fifty-one open, but under new traffic patterns. So everything should be open during the fresh hours at least, so... And then the only other thing I wanted to mention, I just want to confirm, basically saying Mr. Malone was successful here. Is that you hear that? Yeah. Um, I, I know I brought up about a rollover, um, for Larry Malone, the county has gone back for the rollover taxes, the rollback taxes. Um, he appealed that to the courts, and I did get documentation, it appears he was successful in his appeal. And I bring that up because I believe David raised it about two or three months ago. But that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any questions, should I report from the engineer? Any questions there? I guess we're looking at, um, eight, Todd, pretty major public work projects from the engineer report, pretty much all due to storm damage. One is complete, one is on hold pending with North Oakwell Township. And, um, we have pretty hard estimates for three, and we need still some rest of them. Anyway, this is roughly the nine hundred thousand dollars worth of storm damage projects that are detailed on several pages of that report. Township, I guess three of them are suddenly, I believe, in work.
Two, three...
According to David's report, so, I didn't read that.
Yeah, I think actually it'll be four, four or more.
So we're trying to make, uh, our money go as far as we can in recovering from storm damage. Any questions on the maintenance report? Loading officer or codes enforcement report? I'll keep going. Uh, we don't have a written report, I don't know if there's anything that Stan wants to report at this time. Okay. Uh, and the county commission, the hearing board reports. Any questions on any of those? We reached a point where supervisors' comments, and if you allow me to start, I did complete an elected official's EMA seminar on February the ninth, Stan was there, so I had, even had a witness. And attended the quarterly schema meeting with Todd and Stan on February the twenty-first. Supervisor, advisor, myself, and manager Ziegler, along with maintenance supervisor Mike McLean, had a meeting to discuss possible personnel and safety manual amendments, which is not quite ready to bring to the board yet. And, um, somewhere in the last few days, you all got this nice little present from the county of your tax bill. I urge you to look at that and note that along with Phil's show there previously, um, we receive somewhere between fourteen and sixteen dollars pretty much to the township from each of these bills. Uh, it's a bill of, you know, fifteen, sixty hundred dollars plus or minus, very little of that, I guess forty thousand dollars is about the total that comes to the township. There are no increases by either county or the township this year. The township has not had an increase in its tax in, you may know, I'm not, not the town...
I'm not at all.
So it's been a long time, and, um, we are struggling to try to get through the nine hundred thousand dollars of storm damage. We have some requests from the fire companies, and we do have the separate fire tax, but we get none of that, that all goes to the fire companies. And we've kind of deferred that to our next budget year as we try to evaluate that, and we have met with and having some conversations with the fire departments. But just to note that when you see that big bill, you know, the township sees very little of that, I guess unfortunately. Um, I have a note, and Paul kind of started it and ended last year, just reiterate that there are a lot of behind-the-scenes efforts. We try to be very expeditious to get through our meetings, um, but there is a lot of work that's done prior to the meeting. Most supervisors routinely review information, documents, get out and look at sites, we get a packet of information on Fridays that we have time to look at and ask questions about individuals, continually ask questions of the managers throughout the month, and seek additional information. So a lot goes on, so just because we're approving something here quickly, doesn't mean that we haven't had a lot of thought before, before you see it. And two quick things, um, I would note just a congratulations to Jalen Van Nice, I guess she's an old daughter of Dan and Gina Van Nice, uh, Gianna, I believe it is, Van Nice. she's an old daughter of Dan and Gina Van Nice, again, I believe it is, Van Nice, of Blue Dog Farms. But anyway, she's a township resident who was selected as, boy, this is a lot to give them a banner, the 2019 York County Junior Miss Agricultural U.S. Queen. So she is a township resident and brings maybe a little bit of fame to the township.
I would explain when you have a chance.
I thought I would pass that along as well, and I believe that are the efforts I had. So any comments from other supervisors?
I just like to say one thing real quick. We did talk about agricultural use before, and we have seventy, we have thirty-five townships in York County, and a lot of them agriculture-related or were, but they've been developed to a large degree entirely. And we're trying to hang on here with agricultural land. It's important for quality of life standpoint, environmental quality. And we're also trying to make sure when development does occur within the growth area that it has landscaping requirements and it's not too dense. It'll improve our quality of life as well, so as we proceed in the future, we need to keep that in mind. Protecting agricultural land and making sure development does occur is done properly.
Okay. Comments from others? We will move forward down the agenda. Old business, why her flood repairs, I guess, is a little off-aid.
Yeah, we were anticipating that we were going to have a meeting with North Hopewell on Monday, but due to the snow and some of their supervisors plow snow, and our guys were out Sunday night until, I think they were here until eight o'clock Monday morning, so Mike was not available either. So we mutually agreed to postpone the meeting. It's now rescheduled for, I think, March 11th.
11th, yeah, correct.
So should hopefully have a little bit in plan when we get on equal thirds or proceed with flying road.
And that's where, as one gentleman knows, is closed and two bridges out, right? It's two bridges over there. So hopefully watch something on the report at our next meeting. Raises to the possible road closure, Thompson Road and Cloverdale, West Cloverdale Avenue. You want to kind of, do you need an update on that?
Yeah, again, some of this I had brought up last month. There's four township properties along Cloverdale. For those that aren't familiar, this is the Seska Round of Trail. This is Constitution Avenue, and I guess the elementary school's right here. And this is Constitution Station in New Freedom Borough. So Cloverdale comes in here, ties into Shaw Road, and leads over into Railroad Borough. And then you have Thompson Road that comes down here and ties into Stone Arch Road. We were approached by the Shaws, who virtually own just about everything on either side, with the exception of four township residents. There's two residential homes here off of Cloverdale, and there's two here on the corner of Stone Arch and Thompson Road. This first gentleman here, I sent a letter to the four property owners, asking them to give me a call so we could talk about it and meet with them, whatever was most convenient. This gentleman, I never heard anything from the first gentleman. The husband and wife here, I met with them at their home, and they had no objections to the closure, proposed, abandon, is what I should use instead of closure.
Vacate is what I think.
Vacate, yeah. And I'm gonna butcher the last name. I don't know, are you folks?
Kachaskis.
Yeah, you're the, what is it?
Kachaskis.
Kachaskis, okay. What she said. Thank you. They live here. The main access to their property is off of Stone Arch, but they also have, I think it's a three-car garage off of Thompson Road, right in this area. And I spoke to her husband, and he said that they support it as well. And I spoke then, met with the Knowles at their home. They did not say they were favored or objected to it, but they raised, I felt, some valid concerns. And let me zoom in here a little closer. Change it so we can see a little better. This is the, and I apologize, and I'm gonna butcher.
Kachaskis.
Kachaskis.
You got it?
Yeah, I was getting it. This is their property. Here is a garage right here off of Thompson, and then the Knowles live here. The concern that the Knowles raised, and I think it was a valid concern, because as a municipality, when Pendoc comes to us as a municipality and says, "We would like you to take over State Road ABC," the first thing we want to do is look at what condition that road is in, and the culverts and so forth. So that was their question, was the condition of this roadway and the condition of that culvert. Since last meeting, Mike and I have gone out and looked at that, and whether we abandon the road or not, probably in about two years, at the latest, we're gonna have to replace that culvert. It's deteriorated pretty significantly. The bottom's rusted out. It's actually, the bottom's pushing up because of the weight from above, so regardless of what we do, that would have to be replaced. So Mike and I were talking, and Mike McLean is our maintenance supervisor for our Public Works. What he was proposing and suggested, the board proceeds with this, that we replace that culvert pipe, and that we resurface this with asphalt just up past the garages and their driveway. That could all be done in-house. We wouldn't have to contract that work out or anything. It's work that our guys could do with the culvert pipe bid. It's not a large street by any means. So based off of Haintown Road, and we had the washout down there, we're estimating for materials probably around eight, nine thousand dollars.
For the, yeah, brother?
For the culvert and the culvert.
Oh, yeah. We'd have to spend that money in any case.
Yes, definitely for the culvert. Asphalt's not expensive.
They become a private road, and the property owner has then has to be responsible.
Correct. And that was their concern, and I think it's a legitimate concern. They didn't want to agree to it, and then, you know, two years, they have a significant expense that they have to replace.
This should take care of their concern.
Correct. I had not talked to them since, but wanted to get a feel from the board first. In lieu of that, one of the other options talked about was if we did not do anything with the pipe, you know, about thirty-five foot past property line here, shut the road down there, and then put about a thirty-five foot, basically like a little T in the section, so the trucks can back around and so forth, you know, our cloud trucks. But ideally, Mike would recommend that if the board was gonna proceed with it, then we replace that culvert pipe and pave the road.
What do we do about trucks turning around and that kind of thing for trash trucks and...
We actually do have, down here on the hill, you can see it, but the township actually does have down here, because this is our road, we do have the same thing down here, turnaround at the end. And you can kind of hit them by the trees. This is Campbell Road. You can't really see it because you have the train.
So the idea is...
Not Campbell, Constitution.
Constitution, I'm sorry, yes. Here's Stone Arch. Comes in off Constitution. This is Miller Park Drive, goes back to Miller Park. This is the YMCA. So this is Stone Arch comes down. This is Township Road.
That's the generator place, the power place.
Correct, yeah. And there is a turnaround here, so they could utilize that.
So the idea is they would just go and pay us down to the end of that?
Yeah, they may have to come down to this point now, pick up trash. Then up here is the township Borough Line, so it's these two homes. And again, what we would do at this point, see here, we, because we were looking, we would probably put up the jersey walls, then with the appropriate signage that I have listed, come up past this pool about thirty-five feet so that the equipment can pull up here, and then we would put about a thirty-five foot pad in here so that there's somewhere for equipment to back around. And we did notify Railroad Borough and Shrewsbury Borough of what we were looking at and considering. And we did get a letter, email back from Shrewsbury Borough that they had no objections to what we were considering. And in fact, with this being the township and Borough Line, they had indicated that since they're gonna be in here plowing all of this area, that they would also kindly plow for those two homes over us as well.
The turnaround area in question, is that going to be donated by Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, I did mention to Mr. Shaw that he would have to provide us with, if we proceeded with this, we'd have to have some area to back equipment around, and at that time, he did indicate that they would be willing to provide that.
One other question, with the Kachaskis?
Perfect.
Yes. With, since their garage is on the closed part, I believe the, is it Thomas?
Thompson.
Thompson, or no, Noel.
Noel.
I believe Knowles is on the other, the other road, is it not? Or both of their garages on?
Both garages face each other.
Okay, all right, then, what, if we're gonna close it at the end, what are they gonna do in the snowstorm to get out?
Well, the thing is, if we close it, we would probably close it right past their driveways.
Okay, not, not at the end of the road?
No, not the end of the road, because they'd have to have access to their home. But if we vacated at this point, we would vacate in here, Stone Arch Road. So this will become private and would become their responsibility. But that's why we were talking, we would bring it up.
Yes.
To third standards with a new...
But my concern is, how are they gonna get out of their garages to get to the main road then, if that part of the road is private?
It's just like any long private driveway. This becomes an equally shared drive, private drive of each of these property owners.
Okay, who's got a plot?
Yeah, okay, that's, that's the only thing. I just, I don't know if they have a truck or a plow or anything else like that, or if they're vehicles can just drive over it. Yeah, I'm saying, I thought it was probably that long and I have a snow...
That would be my concern, which would be for them getting out and moving back to the...
That's the equivalent that you have up here, right?
We've had the driveways that are that long and long.
And I understand that, but again, it wasn't their concern. As long as we were responsible for the road, it wasn't their concern, I don't worry about it. I just want to make sure that they have a plan in place and are gonna go for that if we are gonna go ahead and approve.
And I know the Knowles are aware that that will become their responsibility.
We've been plowing it before anybody's ever plowed it, so it's plowed before the trucks get there.
Yeah, you raise a great point.
Wonderful, okay, good.
So can I just ask a quick question? If the road became private, would our trash have to be put out at the end of our driveway on Stone Arch then? Because the truck would have no turnaround other than our driveways, which we wouldn't want because they...
Yeah, that's correct. You would have to bring in a higher stone arch there or up here. I assume you keep it out here at the garage area?
We do now, but we could take it to the other end.
We're out here to scale it.
Would that also relocate the mailboxes?
Yes.
I think we have a question.
Yes, I, Kevin Shaw?
Yes.
I'd just like to make a comment.
Can you walk, can you walk up to the microphone? I saw a lot of you here for our...
I wanna keep peace with the neighbors on both ends of the road.
Just do your name and address again. It just happens.
Kevin Shaw, 100 Shaw Road. What I'm gonna ask is, why can't that just remain a short stub of township maintain road up to the top of the property line? And have it negate the turnaround up there, and that way they could have what snow removal needs to be done and what maintenance needs to be done, because I think, if you think about it, out at the other two houses, there's still on a little stub of township road. So they're not gonna be required to maintain that little stub of road from the Borough Well to the end of the yard. So what I'm looking at is kind of fairness between the two on, you know, Thompson, and the two out at the other end.
Probably makes no sense for us to close the road if we do it that way.
Well, I just, it's, I'd like to meet somebody out there, but it would just be so easy at the press of the hill to...
Well, the advantage to us, and obviously there's a lot of cost to do this, so the advantage is we save a little bit money over time by not having to plow those sections of the road.
Kevin, sometimes property is more valuable if it has access by a private road.
I just don't wanna make, but here's the other thing. If I'm gonna be able to also access that road and it's gonna become our private stub, then I'm gonna need a heater right away to come in off of Stone Arch to go up onto our property. So I'm just gonna try to avoid that. So I don't, I just didn't think of that before until after the meeting the other night, when we were talking about vacating that piece, that bottom end of Stone Arch. So I didn't know if it was gonna be easiest to go just to do that or...
You could work out an arrangement with those two neighbors.
Well, we'll have to, but it will have to be, it'll have to be legal, because some were down the road, properties are gonna change and...
Ease the right away for your use.
But that's something that, I don't wanna be behind the curtain. I don't wanna, I don't want anybody to think I'm back there trying to insinuate myself. I'm more than happy to...
And you would have to use that?
Very rarely, but it's gonna be, you'd have to have it. I just wouldn't want to lose that option to go out.
Okay, I was just trying to figure out why you would need to use it.
For convenience. Another day, but tomorrow's another day, and things come up and...
So it's good, okay, convenience.
The only thing I will mention, I haven't spoken to the Knowles with this, and maybe these folks can add something, but I know it's been mentioned to me by the Knowles that there's been issues down here with vehicles late at night, loitering, and so forth, and a concern I would have if I was one of these property owners, this is kind of up over the knob of the hill a little bit, and if we have a turnaround and so forth, it may become another one of those areas where people go over to park.
The one on Stone Arch really likes to be, but the other one there above Saul's House is pretty much visible from the Knowles over there.
I think, Kevin, you could work out something with your neighbors, and they could give you right away, subject to certain conditions. Could be for development purposes, certainly for agricultural use of your property.
Well, see, where you're talking about agriculture use, I have to get down through there, because in the upper right-hand corner of that picture is one of our fields. So see, I have to be able to use humps and room to come to that right there. That's the only way I can get there unless I go clear out around Main Street and...
These neighbors, I appreciate the fact that you're gonna keep that land in agricultural use, and if it was developed, they're gonna have a spree of cars moving by their house. So are you, are you inclined to agree with what I just said?
No, anything really to add?
What's the point? So the fact that he has a right, I mean, there's no question. I think it would be fine for Kevin to have a right away.
For certain uses, as agricultural use.
Sure.
And you could work that out with a legal agreement. Good.
Other than that, I...
While you're up here, Kevin, I have a question that maybe you can answer. The other end I was gonna mention is here where it meets Railroad Borough.
It's right about...
Because, yeah, this is Borough Road coming up, right about here, the proximal location is where the line comes.
My house is in Railroad Borough, and I picked up trophies at Shrewsbury Township.
So we would, we, there is no plan for us to construct a turnaround up here, because that's in Railroad Borough where we would shut it down. Now, a question I do have, I thought about... Now, a question I do have, I thought about this when we were out there the other day. There's some cones and flags, and there's water here, correct?
The cone was put there because I had, there was a load of stones brought in, the equipment going in and out of there, they were going to, they were worried about dragging a lot of dirt out into the field here this break, so they. And I think the cone was put there to show, to show where the water cap was at.
I guess my question is, do you know where that water line comes from, where it goes to?
It, it goes almost up across to where your hand.
Oh, okay.
And then from the hand, on the, kind of, on, on the green side.
Okay, I guess my question is, here's the township road here, is it along the township road at all?
There's, there's your quarter, the whole way back along there.
The whole way along Cloverdale?
Yes, it comes all the way down past my place and down to my order.
Is that something we would have to look at to provide them?
Well, that's the other thing, I told, I talked to my sister, I said, that's what I'm saying, I can't be locked in. It has to be accessible to your quarter, and I guess it's a Med Ed line that goes across there at, at the Cloverdale end. So, I said, I'm not, I'm not chaining myself in there, we'll just have to work around the rough edges a little bit there, and, and. I'm more than happy to let people have access as long back there, but on this first curve, coming out Cloverdale and that first road here, there, twice in the last two months, I got about a hundred feet of black mark, they came into Shrewsbury, and locked it up and stayed all the way down across the field, twice now. And that has to be people that don't know the road, that they were buying that. But I'm, I'm serious, it's, it's almost a hundred feet, so I don't know how far a car can skid at what speeds. But one was done during, between ten and twelve o'clock, I, I left and came home, and, and there was, there was, so it was done in daylight, it wasn't like somebody was.
Kevin, while you're here, I, I know, and I appreciate the fact, I think the whole board does, that you're, you're committed to agriculture, your whole family is committed to it. I knew your grandfather, and I saw your father, so I think we all appreciate that. This is, this, I, I was curious, so, considering the, you would, you would rank very high with the Agriculture Preservation Board in York County, if you, if you put your farm in an ag preservation program that's sold and developed, right?
I, I went to the meeting, it might have been back in January, they, they had, they had a meeting fairly recently, and, and they gave a sheet where your category is, and the score sheet, and, and I definitely wanted to talk to them.
The size of farms a factor, the pressure for development, I mean?
Yes. Utilities, the pressure, the quality of the ground, and they have a whole scorecard that they, they rate, so.
Well, I'm glad you're looking into that, I mean, yeah, appreciate it.
And, and like I said, we've just talked about the exit four, and, and I'm, I'm just worried that this road's going to be used as a shortcut to get around Shrewsbury. It's going to crush it down, and then everybody from the township to the borough is going to have more money to spend.
I think what, what we're doing with you, that should be quest, is we're helping to preserve. One of the advantages is, is it would increase the opportunity to preserve farms better.
I, I know this needs to be done, I wish it didn't have to be done, but I'm, I'm looking ahead, and looking at what's going on in the area, and the increased population, and it's not going to get any better. So I just thought now would be the time, if I had a little sympathy here and there about it, maybe to push something forward. The neighbors are, seem fairly happy with it. New neighbors would come in, that could change, I could have a bunch of pushback from that, so. And Railroad Borough, I talked to them about each, each end of their road, the water drains right to the house, they don't have the money to do anything. It's just, it's just a mess.
All right, well, thank you for your.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right, so I hope you can give me a hand here, and we'll work something out.
I'd like to.
Appreciate you for thinking of some nice questions about this.
I have nothing to do with this, but my question might be, returning up, they have a gentleman's agreement now for the driveway. What happens if one of the others sells, do they have to have a maintenance?
Well, you need to get that agreement on the water line.
Well, you have to get it to your D, don't you?
The code standard for avoiding misunderstanding between road issues is something in writing in the court, in the courthouse.
Tony?
I wasn't aware of this, so I have to ask some questions. Where are you planning on shutting the road down, and where are premise that is? It's not often that we use Shaw Road, but with the flooding that occurs in Railroad, at least twice a year, we, we use Shaw Road to back to the trail, to direct traffic that's coming down, to get them to, to free them. Because I can't send them out to Forest, and then down to New York, because that's flooded out at the same time. So if, if Shaw Road is going to be closed, and I understand what, what the reason for it is, we're going to need to know that we can't use it anymore, that it's going to be completely closed, unaccessed.
Not necessarily. You could work out an agreement, you could work out an agreement to Shaw, otherwise.
It's not going to be maintained at all.
It's going, it's going to be very.
It's going to be very.
Well, that's what I'm guessing at, it's, okay, it's one block, correct?
Correct.
Okay, now, my question's, my follow-up question to that, because I can, we can figure out traffic, move where we turn around. We've had fire calls out in the area, power lines down, how am I going to get to it? And if everything's blocked off, how am I going to get to it?
Can you show me where, where, or I guess you should, where it's blocked off?
It's my understanding, we'll be blocked off there, we're going to be blocked off right where it says Shaw Road, and we're blocked off down.
And right here.
So how do I get into that center area?
What, what would you need to get there?
Well, we've been at power line, we've had fires out there, power line come down. While it doesn't happen often, and especially down the lower end.
It would just be a long private drive at that point.
We're only going through land, so I need to, need to understand.
Well, I, I, I'm just going to say, you're talking about the power line, and the power line would be accessible from the end there at Cloverdale. That's, that's exactly where it goes across at, plus it goes across there at Stone Arch.
Right, well, I can't get to it at, on Thompson Road, that's the two places we've had fires so far, that I can think off the top of my head. We had a field fire because of the downline. All I'm looking at is, is understand that if, and I, I'm trying to figure out how to point to this.
Well, here's the point.
If, if we access it from here, if you have a field fire, you know, mice with matches, crazy birds, whatever happens, if you end up getting a field fire in here, somehow, if I'm going through someone's property to get to it, is, is this all your property here?
Yes.
All right, so.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if you're, I didn't quite catch, you're in the fire.
I'm Fire Chief of Shrewsbury.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, we're not.
I'm just trying.
We're more than, than like you, and your quarter, more than happy to work with you, to have whatever type of arrangements you need, if you think you would have to have, have to come back through there.
My, my question would be, instead of a Jersey wall barricade, can we do a lock gate?
Problem is, the roads that could be maintained. At least I can open the gate and get through. Roads will be maintained, walkers, potholes and everything, there's something, there's debris there, and so forth. Because the road's not going to be maintained, other than a field red.
Well, I'm, I'm hoping without a lot of traffic on there, that it won't deteriorate too fast. Well, as it needs, a pothole filled, I just might have that done. Because I'm going to have to drive it, I don't want to be driving over it. A lot of the chance of field fires, if those roads are not being used too soon.
The roads being used have nothing to do with the fires we had there, Paul, so I'm getting it.
And where would you, like? Where would you feel you'd need a lock gate, rather than an exhaust box, or?
Well, I'm just saying, if, it's a barrier either way, if, if at Cloverdale, if instead of putting a Jersey wall, if a gate is put there with a lock on it.
I picture a gate.
We can look at it, we'll force a shop, we'll have a key to access to it, but it's something that at least we can get through to get into the area, rather than going out around and depending.
Let me ask you this question. Okay, that's all farm area, suppose that road was never there, and there's power lines there, I mean, how are you going to access it then?
Well, same point, that's what I'm. There is remnants of a road there that we can use.
Point is, what I'm saying is, you've got to go this way, how many other areas do you have where there is no roads that you go into anyhow? There's, I mean.
No, I understand what you're saying, in this case, we don't have to, that's the point.
I think.
I just like.
But what I'm saying is, I'm sure, it'll be barricaded shut, but if there's a field fire, I'm sure you can get around that barricade with your equipment, because there's going to be banks there, and you will do so, is what I'm saying.
It supports us, that's all, that's all I'm worried about. It's a deteriorated road, and if it's still there to use, I'd love to keep using it, you know, just for that emergency condition. But, you know, if it isn't, if that's not.
Fair question, because I even have a note here, you know, to ask for your, your input from, you know.
I think Kevin's off. I think Kevin's off, is the way to work with you.
I'm sure he will.
Yeah, I, I didn't, I didn't want to be under the impression that it's going to be a solid barricade there, to allow people that with utilities to access that, it'd just need to be a gate with a shared lock, or latch, or whatever mounts to it, that anybody that needs to go back there will have a key, or have whatever it takes to. And, and I don't expect to have a gate shut all day in here.
Well, if there's a gate there, I assume that Todd would be township property, correct? If it had a gate instead of Jersey walls?
You could put a Jersey wall there to deter anyone from going through. Mr. Shaw, we could put the gate up above your house, coming from Railroad. It's less visible to the public, so it's less chance of someone busting.
You see that, you can work these out.
But I do have a question about Stone Arch Road, is that being closed from Thompson down? I missed that conversation. So that, that'll still be there.
The whole road's there.
All right, that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Tony.
As far as Jersey walls versus a, a gate, I mean, that's, that's all negotiable and so forth. My thinking would be, if the townships vacating those roads, and we're eliminating ourselves from responsibility, we don't want anything to do with the locks, or the keys, or the rights, or, or anything. That has become Mr. Shaw's, and, you know, I, I'll follow up with Mr. Shaw outside this meeting, but I think that if we vacated, he should be contacting Water and Med Ed to talk about getting an easement in place, because it will become his property, I don't think, you know, I, I'll follow up with the solicitor as well. But, you know, there's a, there's a couple of components here that I think we need to research a little further, and come back with, or that are equal.
Details are important, but I'd like to have the board make some motion towards approving this, subject to a number of different details.
I, I agree, I mean, as far as the board taking some action, that this is, that you definitely want to pursue this, because if you don't, at the end of the day.
But the processes. Advertising, and the public hearing, and probably some.
Yeah, that, we're not, I don't think.
No, 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 I don't think we are either. I guess at this point in time, you're just looking for, is there approval from the board, or is the concept to do this, and?
Utilize our time to continue details.
I'll make a motion.
I think we need to define.
Part of my motion. You can add on to it. I make a motion, the township, the band, Cloverdale and Thompson Road is subject to agreements with affected property owners, and also the Shrewsbury Fire Department. And utilities. And utilities, yeah, and, and any other entity, any other entity that may be affected by it.
I guess with that motion, I'd be a little concerned if we're saying to, to vacant, I don't, I think it's early to say that.
Okay, okay, I'm, I'm open on this.
I saw the nod from the station.
I would respectfully suggest that you, you're still in a position where you want to direct your staff to continue work.
Right.
Or decide what you're.
Yeah, I understand, we're not, we're headed towards that, but we aren't there yet for us, I understand, thank you. But my motion would be that we, that we agree to proceed.
Make a motion to authorize the staff to pursue. Basically pursue the details that we allowed us to, then look at the vacation.
Thank you, I think it's good enough. So, I'll second, I'll second that motion, but you made the, you made the motion.
You made the motion, he just added it, correct?
He really liked his motion.
Thank you, thank you very much.
So the motion is for clarity, is we would be authorizing or directing the staff to proceed with conversations, with details worked out with the attorney, with the parties, I guess not, with Mr. Shaw right there. With the end all, we have to eventually look at closing those roads, does that make sense? So we have, we have a motion and a second question. Aye? You were sort of directed. Thank you all for your comments, they were, they were certainly helpful. We have, I guess, enough of the landscaping that was seen.
Yeah, I don't have much of an update, because the weather the last month has been most cooperative with the landscaping company.
But we've seen lots of dirt.
Hopefully, the snow will soon melt, and the sun will shine, and the fresh road.
I've got a question, Phil, if I could ask you a question, please. You, you made your rescue, kind of rescue, when we planned out the sign along East Forest Avenue, you probably have seen it, commercially used on that site, you thought it would be open to reliance from landscape to help that sign?
Yeah, I had a meeting with Joe and his son Frankie last week about their property in Glen Rock, and I told him that they need to address the landscape issue, and I think that Frankie's contacted you. I mean, I, I'm not directly involved in it, but I'm trying to get through to him, look, go do what you need to do there, get this resolved. And I think, I talked to Frankie today, because I knew I was going to be here, and he said that he had talked to Todd, and, and that they wanted to try to work it out, but. So I, I think the best thing to do is for it.
Not just the overall site, but this.
I know, I understand. All I can do is tell them that there's.
I understand that.
So I've done that.
We, we appreciate your help.
Okay, thanks.
We have the proposed Sado amendment, this would be a vote to advertise.
Correct, yeah, last month, there was a question raised regarding woodland preservation and so forth, and Paul and I are, and they're looking at the ordinance closer, and we believe the language is there, we're just going to have to change some of our processes in-house here to monitor, to make sure those notes on the plans carry through, because there's some of them that are actually supposed to be written into the deeds. So, you know, it's going to be administrative responsibility, that we're going to have to make sure that we, when the plan's approved, and before it's recorded, make sure the developer is aware that when they write those, write the deeds, that that language needs to be incorporated, and then we'll have to just follow up, you know, just to make sure that when the deeds are, that they're recorded, that that's been followed.
And the buyer, at closing, his lawyer, right, Jim, will advise him what the covenant is in that deed.
That is to be hoped.
So, with that in mind, Paul can correct me, but I believe there, there's no other amendments, other than what we talked about last month's meeting, no additional amendments.
Okay, other questions? Well, we have a motion that we approve advertising for the. Well, I make a motion that we approve advertising for the amended Sado plan.
Do we have other things that need advertising at this point that we can unlock?
Well, this is one of those, we had talked about this before, we talked about with the solicitor, that anything under the code book, with the exception of the Sado and the zoning, the Sado and zoning should really be advertised separately, but any other chapters in the code book, it, it's more appropriate, but I'm not aware of anything else under the.
So we have a motion. Second. Second. Motion in a second, further comments? You go ahead.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Schaub, nice to shop in here for a bit. Uh, I'm, I'm not sure that Kevin knows exactly what asked me to on this suggestion or proposal, so could you call, could you call Kevin tomorrow and tell him where we're heading with this?
Yeah, yeah, I'm going to catch up with him. So he and I are on the same page.
Thank you.
Alright, five votes to the affirmative, we've approved that to be advertised, and that moves us to new business. We have two store order agreements, pretty much the standard agreement.
Correct.
Nothing exceptional or different about those.
One is for a new home, a store order operation maintenance agreement, and the other one is for First Capital down in Sykesland, where the landscaping is, we need to do some store order management from there.
Can you approve those on our motion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion, we approve the store order agreements for 3134 Holland Road and 1206 Baltimore Street.
I'll second it.
Motion in second, questions?
Aye.
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 Five votes to the affirmative, they are approved, and you might want to get just a tiny background on the septic, bring the extension.
You have to recall, last month, the board approved a septic agreement, this is for a property that was in foreclosure, was sold, needs to have some septic repairs completed before it can be occupied, and of course, when there's a bank of foreclosure, they don't want to spend another dollar, so we've done these septic agreements that allow the property to be sold, but it can't be occupied until the work's completed. We usually put in a deadline for that work, which we did in this particular case. Our last meeting was February 6th, I believe settlement was scheduled for that Friday, the 8th, and then they had it till March 15th to do the work. After our meeting, the settlement, for whatever reason, I don't know why, but got pushed back to February 25th, and then with the weather, there's no way they can meet at the March 15th date. So all they are asking, and I'm asking the board, is that you amend this sewer agreement to allow the work to be completed, uh, expiration made of March 15th, and move that to April 30th.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Questions, comments? Fisher, look.
Aye.
Aye. Five votes to the affirmative, that extension is approved. We have the Spire EMS response change, which you did explain to me, but maybe for everybody else.
Yeah, what happens is, for every call box in the township, whether it's EMS or fire, they're already set up and they know who gets first call, second call, what equipment gets dispatched and so forth. Anytime that the Fire Chief or an EMS captain wants to change the, the call sequence, have you in any of those boxes, it's supposed to be signed off by the municipality. And apparently, they're sending this out to all the municipalities, I'm out there in the process of just updating their database, what have you, but what they're looking for is for the board to appoint who will be the person that signs off on those call boxes. So for example, if Tony from Shrewsbury Fire Company needs to call, change one of his boxes, he would need to go to that person to sign off on behalf of the township to allow that change.
I think it's worded as the highest elected official, unless otherwise.
Yeah, there's, there's one of two options, uh, the highest ranking elected municipal official, um, or an individual noted below, authorized by the board.
My feeling would be that Todd would probably be the, the best person.
I would second that.
He's not elected, Tony.
I've been doing this.
Alright, and thus there are other comments, we'll go ahead and vote.
I don't want to do this.
I figured if you got her at it.
Aye.
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 Five votes to the affirmative, Todd is our man. We have some deeds to transfer development rights, I think it's pretty clean, but.
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward. Last month, if you recall, we approved phase two and phase three, the final subdivision for William Solomon, um, part of that subdivision, and it's in the parcel history table, where those development rights are coming from and so forth, and Dr. Solomon is actually holding those deeds, uh, but we actually need to, uh, move them and record them according to deeds that are being moved from his possession and being assigned to these individual parcels. So if there's an official record that they've been assigned to that subdivision that was approved last month, so what you're going is just authorizing the transfer of the development rights, which we theoretically did last month.
It was all verified, it was all over, it's just moving from one.
But this is, this is approving the actual deeds being transferred from his individual ownership to these individual parcels that were approved last month.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any questions, comments? We'll vote.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll stand.
Aye.
We can flip it up. I have no interest in my brother's answer here, but I'm standing, so other than your question, I still have other my interests.
Four votes to the affirmative, and one extension, and that's approved. I guess we're looking at a bid going out for a, like, trash collection, basically.
Yeah, and again, I have one there for us to vote on it tonight, but if you're not comfortable at this point, we could wait until next month yet, if you'd like, but that would be the latest that we should wait. What you see red line is changes from our current contract. I think it's pretty self-explanatory. The only thing I would need to fill in on section three under quantities, there's a section there regarding the size of domsters and so forth, I just need to verify what we have there now. So we see C Y, that's cubic yard, uh, for the dumpster size, I just need to find out if it's a three cubic yard, four cubic yards, six cubic yards, so I would need to complete that information. Everything else is pretty self-explanatory. There is one question I do have for the board under section six on page three, it says the contractor may choose for pickup to be over two or three days. I, I would recommend to the board that we narrow that down to, to two days to do the entire township, they've been able to do that for the last, how many years, guys?
Now, these are just our parameters for the contract?
Yeah, well, this will be their basis for.
And then it will shop, potentially shop differently.
Yeah, what we have to do is, if the board approves this, we have to advertise and request bids from, from waste haulers. Typically, in this area, you're going to get two, which is going to be Republic and Penn Waste generally for this area. But this is the specifications that they have to, to present that bid. I make a motion to approve, uh, the draft and limit that collection schedule to two days.
And to advertise.
And to go and advertise.
Before we do that, can I just ask a question? Do you want to keep the, um, bid bond at three thousand as suggested here?
Yeah, that's, that's about five percent.
You were saying, as opposed to 10%, which is the normal?
The typical is, is 10% bid bond, um, which should probably be about $60,000, and I, I don't think it really matters either way, because they purchase those bid bonds, they, they can if they want, they can give us a check, but more likely it will be a bid bond that they purchase for.
The key is, we're trying.
It's like 1%.
We're just, it was very low before, and we got a real fly-by-night.
Yeah, the bid bond in the past was $1,000 for a $650,000 contract. And, and Paul, you may recall, and Jeff, I don't know if you were on the board at that time.
I wasn't on the board, but.
We, we had someone that came in and put a bid in, and, you know, with a low bid bond, $1,000, but they, they really were not equipped.
They were even.
They were the lowest bidder.
Yeah.
So. We did have some.
More of states.
Issues, so.
Were you thinking it should be less or more?
More.
If the standard is 10%, I'm not sure why we're doing five, I mean, I certainly agree we should do more than 1% or than $1,000, $3,000 is considered improvement, but.
I don't think 10% is a reasonable.
Just a question.
And, and the thing you can do, you can, you can even put the wording there, it doesn't have to be a set dollar amount, it could be 10% of the, the base bid, or the, the full-service bid for the three years, and have language to that effect.
Is it cleaner to have a dollar amount?
I think it's cleaner.
Are there any objections? If we increased it to?
No, no.
And Dave will make his motion.
I can make my motion.
Okay.
Motion to approve this draft on the condition of the two-day collection period and the $16,000 bid bond.
I'll second it. Other questions in the board? Okay, Fisher, look. This is to advertise.
Yes. Yes, uh, aye.
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 Five votes to the affirmative, we'll put back your hands if it's new.
Todd, where are we now? Are we in our third year of our current contract, or are we in one of those optional years?
Uh, the, the second of the optional, so this is five years.
Okay, we have one other item left on our new business, that's the York County Emergency Management Program Advisory Committee.
Yes, we received this email from York County Department of Emergency Services, this article you just mentioned here, York County Emergency Management Program Advisory Committee, they're looking for a representative from the township, I believe they need twice a year, and I've already recruited Stan, unless someone else is interested.
I make a motion.
I second it.
Questions? Let's vote. You were willing, correct?
Yes, I did check with him.
Yeah, did, did we give a second?
Yes, Paul did.
Wonderful.
Aye.
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 It happened very rapidly, thank you for your service.
Stan again is our man.
Thanks, Stan.
Thank you very much, Stan. Alright, we have reached another point in the agenda where if there's anyone who wishes to speak to the board, you have a chance to do it at this time. I guess let me back up, are there any questions on correspondence in the packages? There were quite a few things in the package, and I, I, we're starting that, if anybody has questions, I think it's pretty clear, I think.
I have comments or questions?
Can I, can I wait and make sure, you can just stand there, I think we're almost done, I just want to make sure we've got you. Any correspondence questions from the board?
Is this sewer question something?
From that, from the letter? I haven't heard anything back.
Okay, you're good? Now we're ready for public comment, go ahead.
The young man here talking about the memorial trees, uh, I don't know how deep the orange in this, the plant, you know, it's kind of the easy part, but in order to have nice, stately, looking straight trees, some lights will have to work on, you know, shape them in the tree, or otherwise you're just going to have a little growing bush and tree. I don't know if these people who are involved with this have some, whatever the fancy name is, the arboritis or whatever, too.
Well, Paul sits on the committee, so we're relying on him to keep them straight.
Yeah, trees grow nice and straight in the woods, but when they're out in the light, you wind up with a, a bush and tree, it doesn't look like very much.
What you say is true, I think this group is very, uh, on top of that, and these sycamore trees we have there already, they didn't take a lot of, really, they somehow, they keep their shape, but there are, there is some worth starting to die at the time, and they're, they're a good group, I think they'll take care of it.
That's, that's, that's what I just wanted to bring up, because sometimes the most obvious thing just kind of overlooks. The other thing, we're talking about the, the developers taking entire woodlots away and whatever, uh, the development over there in Cannon Road, there's an entire woods gone.
Yeah, that's been addressed.
That was in the story, that was a, a very large trees in there. And, and they had to replace it, I think by a factor of two.
Yeah, there's a reforestation plan that went along with that.
They had, they had to replace that, the only problem is, those are ancient trees in that woodlot, and they're going to be planting seedlings, or not seedlings, but saplings, so.
So they'll come back in 150 years and we'll see the results.
Yeah.
But there again, like you were, and the board was addressing last month, that there's nobody there watching them, there's no, there's no method of saying, look, you can only do this, but you, Philly, just go ahead, and all of a sudden the woods is gone. Well, and then it's, you know, well, I'm sorry, but.
We have, it was approved as part of their plan, as was the area that they're going to have to plant down below it, which is twice the size of that woodlot. And we will monitor that as they proceed.
I just went out on the road the other day, I looked over and I thought, boy, that's just exactly what they were talking about, that whole thing is gone.
In the, in the, since that's in the plan, there are routine inspections by our engineer and others, so they are well aware of that, we spend some time, but, but we appreciate that you're aware of that as well.
Alright, just, just thought I'd bring it up in case it was.
If somebody develops a wooded lot, like, like there, uh, those 14,000 square feet, a certain sized lot, and the rest has to be protected, so we do have some protection, but we can't say they're a tree.
Okay, that was, that was it.
Alright, thank you.
Kevin.
Anybody else who wishes to address the board? Only once, twice, go have a motion. Second, we're adjourned. Thank you all for coming out and staying in the course today.